Folks, let me offer a word of prayer for us, please. And we have several brothers and sisters in our congregation that we need to be lifting up specifically. So I am from memory going to try to remember those folks, but if I happen to miss someone, please just speak up and let's lift all of those names up to the King. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus Christ, oh God, we come to you, Lord, very thankful. I'm thankful, Lord, that those that are here, Lord, are making the commitment to get into your Word, oh God. Very thankful for their presence here, Lord, for their hunger for your Word. Lord, we seek you in all that we do. Lord, we are a praying congregation, and that is so very important. A spiritual backbone of the body of Jesus Christ. So I pray in the name of Jesus for our brothers and sisters in this very moment who need our prayer. By name and in the name of Jesus Christ, I lift up Paula, I lift up Fuzzy, I lift up Dot, I lift up... From memory, Lord. David Doyle, thank you, thank you. Bob Larson, thank you, and wife Sheila, thank you.
David Fortuna.
David Fortuna, thank you, thank you. Lord Jesus, we lift these whom we love and whom you love and surround your love with in the name of Jesus Christ, Lord, in faith, Lord, and you being our first love. We wrap our arms around them. We pray, Jesus, over them. May we always, Lord, take the hope of the gospel of Jesus Christ with us, praying for our brothers and sisters. Lord, by name, those spoken and those unspoken, Lord, they need our prayer, and we love them so very much. In Jesus' powerful name we pray. Amen. Thank you, folks. I appreciate you allowing me to do that. Okay, you have, I hope, gotten the study guide that has been passed around. So you can certainly put your eyes to that in this section also when you have some time, some downtime when you get home, and our spending time in the Word and in the book can refer to that and also jot some things down. So, folks, just kind of a little breakdown of the book, and then we'll get right into it just for a moment. A thank you to Rachel as we were brainstorming ideas to address this class and do it in an effective manner. Just a couple of things I wanted to mention here, some details. So if you would, just for a moment, let's look at page one, okay? Page one, page one through page 10, okay? This is, as the pastor mentions in the introduction, these are his words, okay? This is what I'm gonna call, and certainly he refers to, as Christian fiction, okay? So I am not going to spend a lot of time in this particular section, but I do want you to read it, okay? It is very well-written, but these are Dr. Jeremiah's words. So if you are interested and so led, please, please certainly read at the very beginning of each chapter his own narrative about the story. What we are going to focus on in our session today and also in the following sessions will begin with page 11, okay? With page 11, what I'm gonna do is, in this particular study, hit some highlights, okay? That I want you to take note of, that I want you to circle, that I want you to star, because I always want you to have a reference that you can go back to as you are studying the Word of God for yourself or in a Bible study in the future. And you happen to come back to Daniel, or you have an interest, or maybe you just need to do some sharpening up on the background context. You always have resources as a supplement to the Word of God. So we will begin on page 11, and I'll certainly address some things in here that I want you to take note of. But we will spend the majority of our time in chapter one, and we'll be going back and forth from the Bible to the book. So let's do this. Let's go ahead and give it a read-through, please. And what we've done that I think has been effective thus far is for folks to read it in sections, and then I want to offer some thoughts on it, and we can discuss from there. So whoever is led, let's do this. In my New King James Version, it's nicely broken into sections, so we can kind of do it like that. So I'm gonna suggest, for instance, that somebody read it in that way. So I'm looking at right from the start here, chapter one, verse one, verses one and two. That is one section. So whoever feels led this morning, go ahead and read those first two verses, and then we'll switch up the readers here.
"In the third year of the reign of Jehovah, king of Judah, Nebuchadnezzar, king of Babylon, came to Jerusalem and besieged it. And the Lord delivered Jehovah, I guess, king of Judah into his hand, along with some of the articles from the temple of God. These he carried off to the temple of his God in Babylonia and put in the treasure house of his God."
Thank you. Okay, let's do verse three through verse seven. Verse three, verse three, verse seven.
"Then the king instructed Ashpernance, the master of his eunuchs, to bring some of the children of Israel and some of the king's descendants and some of their nobles, young men, in whom there was no foolish but good-looking, gifted in all wisdom, possessing knowledge, and quick to understand, who had ability to serve the king's palace, and whom they might teach the language and literature of Chaldeans. And the king appointed them, and gave him provision of the king's delicacies and of the wine which he drank, and three years of training for them, so that at the end of that time they might serve before the king. Now among those of the sons of Judah were Daniel, Hananiah, Michiel, and Azariah. To them the chief of the eunuchs gave names; he gave Daniel the name Belphazar, Belphazar, to Hananiah, Shadrach, to Michiel, Meshach, and to Azariah, Abednego."
Thank you, Ted. Great job there. Let's see, verses eight through 10.
"But Daniel resolved not to defile himself with the royal food and wine, and he asked the chief official for permission not to defile himself this way. Now God had caused the official to show favor and sympathy to Daniel. But the official told Daniel, 'I am afraid of my lord, the king, who has assigned your food and drink. Why should he see you looking worse than the other young man your age? The king would then have my head because of you.'"
All right. Thank you, Lisa. Okay, let's do verses 11 through 15.
"Daniel then said to the guard and the chief official that appointed over Daniel, Hananiah, Michiel, and Azariah, 'Please test your servants for ten days; give us nothing but vegetables to eat and water to drink. Then compare our appearance with that of the young men who eat the royal food, and treat your servants in accordance with what you see.' So he agreed to this and tested them for ten days. At the end of the ten days, they looked healthier and better-nourished than any of the young men who ate the royal food."
Excellent. Thank you, Randy. Appreciate that. Whoever would like to take 17 through the rest of that chapter through 21. 17 through 21.
"God gave these four young men, as usual, appetite for understanding every aspect of literature and wisdom, and God gave Daniel the special ability to interpret the meanings of histories and dreams. When the training period recorded by the king was completed, the chief of staff brought all the young men to king..." I know that name. Have you decided? "The king talked with them, and no one impressed him as much as Daniel, Hananiah, Michiel, and Azariah. So they entered the royal service. Whenever the king consulted them in any manner requiring wisdom and balanced judgment, he found them ten times more capable than any of the magicians and enchanters in his entire kingdom. Daniel remained in the royal service until the first year of the reign of King Sappus."
All right. Thank you, folks, for reading. There was a purpose behind getting everyone to read first, read through this chapter, because it really addresses one of the biblical themes in this book from there on out, okay? And go ahead and jot this word down. It's called sovereignty, the sovereignty of God. Maybe you've heard it introduced in this way. God is sovereign, okay? We used to have a joke in seminary that these big fancy words were high-tuition words, okay? Well, I really look at the word itself, sovereign, as one of those high-tuition words, but it really has a very important meaning, a powerful meaning, okay? So let's define biblically, okay, what the sovereignty of God is, or God is sovereign. So let's do this. Let's get into the Word of God. I want us to look at firstly the book of Jeremiah. So if you will turn there into that Old Testament text, it is just as a heads-up, two books behind the book of Daniel. So it is fairly close there. The book of Jeremiah, in front of, I'm sorry, in front of. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Sorry, sorry. I promise I know how to draw. I promise, I promise, I promise. It is. Well, it's Wednesday, isn't it? Look at that, look at that. Look at that. We're all still waking up, right? Okay, all righty. Jeremiah, Jeremiah, chapter 32, Jeremiah, chapter 32, verse 17. Jeremiah, chapter 32, verse 17, okay? About the sovereignty of God, okay? So looking at that text now, I will read it for us. It says this, "Ah, Lord God, behold, you have made the heavens and the earth by your great power and outstretched arm. There is nothing too hard for you." Wow, praise God. Let me just read that again, because I want that to give us hope if we have a heavy heart this morning. Verse 17, "Ah, Lord God, behold, you have made the heavens and the earth by your great power and outstretched arm. There is nothing too hard for you." The sovereignty of God, okay? Let's go to one more text, okay? One more text. First Chronicles, First Chronicles. Let's go to First Chronicles, 16 and 31, okay? First Chronicles, okay? First Chronicles, chapter 16, and 31. You know, it's amazing when you do a Bible study like this, and if you feel comfortable in highlighting, maybe it's something that you highlighted months or years ago and forgot about it, and then you're in a Bible study, and it's already highlighted for you. I love that. I think that's a blessing from above in itself. So First Chronicles, chapter 16 and 31, okay? And it says this, "Let the heavens rejoice, and let the earth be glad, and let them say among the nations, 'The Lord reigns.'" Okay? I'll read it again, another really powerful text here. "Let the heavens rejoice, and let the earth be glad, and let them say among the nations, 'The Lord reigns.'" Love that, okay? So if you were to look up the definition of the sovereignty of God, God being sovereign, okay? We can kind of capture it in one word or in several words. God is in control, okay? God is in control. God is in control of the heavens and earth. God is in control in a plan of salvation for mankind. God is in control, okay? So I want us to be thinking like that and with a faith lens, okay? Let's let that word stick to us, okay? The sovereignty of God, because what I see, what I see here, just in your reading of chapter one, God is in control despite the fact, okay, that a foreign enemy has come in and has invaded and has exiled the people and has totally disrupted their life and their comfort and their existence completely. God is still in control, and how we know that is because God uses His people, the faithful, to do just that. It doesn't mean that they're perfect, okay? But they receive the call and say yes to the call and move forward with the call. Bless you, bless you. So the sovereignty of God, God is in control, okay? Just a couple of things that struck me as I was reading chapter one that I just want to bring to your attention. Number one, let's get into the first few verses here in Daniel again, if you'll look there, okay? What struck me, and I needed some more clarification on, okay? Maybe it struck you too. Okay, so we're told right away a very detailed account, okay? That we have a king in Judah, okay? In his third year, okay? He is on the throne. Then another king from an opposing kingdom, Nebuchadnezzar, okay? Came to Jerusalem and besieged it. Now watch this in verse two, okay? "And the Lord gave Jehovah, king of Judah, into his house, okay? With some of the articles of the house of God." Okay, articles. That spoke to me, okay? What is it specifically are we talking about in regards to articles? You may have a note on that if you have a study Bible, but just for clarity, okay? It talks about these articles, okay? And then it goes on to say, okay, these articles must be of some significance, okay? Because the articles then are carried into the land of Shinar, to the house of his God. And he brought the articles into the treasure house of his God. So articles is mentioned multiple times, okay? What are the articles? Just a few, okay? Just a few I wanted to mention. These would be the articles in the Israelites' place of worship, okay? In the temple, those articles. Let me just name a few, okay? The laver of water, cleansing is important for the Jewish people. What I read about this laver, okay, is that actually there is a mirror inside of this laver. As you are washing your hands, preparing, being cleansed, there is your face there. So it's not just a cleansing of the hands, but of the heart, of the self, of the spirit, of the soul. A laver of water, an article taken. Also, the incense, okay? Taken from the house of God, okay? Scripture talks about how when incense is burned, okay? It is a pleasing aroma unto God. If any of you are from a Catholic background, incense is very involved in your journey of faith. Not just the Catholic Church, but also within many Protestant churches as well. So the incense was important. That was an important article. Also, the Ark of the Covenant, okay? The Ark of the Covenant. The tablets, okay? The tablets are very, very important. The law, okay? And then another one that I wrote down was the table of showbread. All articles that were contained in the temple then taken out, okay? And brought to this new land. Okay, so just wanted to mention that. Okay, while we are thinking about the sovereignty of God, there was another Scripture verse that I believe will be a focal point, okay, for the rest of this book, okay? And let's look at it just for a moment. Let's look at verse eight, okay? Verse eight, chapter one, verse eight, okay? Just for clarity, let's read it again, okay? "But Daniel proposed in his heart that he would not defile himself with the portion of the king's delicacies, nor with the wine which he drank. Therefore he requested of the chief of the eunuchs that he may not defile himself." There it is. That's important. That is key, okay? Because that ultimately, okay, will set Daniel and his companions apart from the rest, okay? This will make him, in a sense, holy and righteous before God, okay? That is key. That is a focus verse. So if you just wanted to highlight that, please, please do, okay? Please do. All right. One other thing that struck me in the reading that I want to bring up here. Let's look at verse 20 just for a moment, okay? Verse 20, and I'll read it here. Wow, this really just kind of came off the page for me. It says, "In all matters of wisdom and understanding, about which the king examined them, he found them," wow, "ten times better, ten times better, okay? Ten times better than all of the magicians and astrologers who were all in his realm." Okay? Ten times better, okay? Just a couple of things, a couple of things. Back to the sovereignty of God, okay? Back to the sovereignty of God. We're gonna be coming back to this over and over again, an important thing, okay? Because Daniel and his companions honored God, he made them ten times better, right? With wisdom, he made them ten times better with understanding, okay? That is a figure of speech, but it's deeper, and it's got wonderful meaning that certainly speaks to the church, to people of faith today honoring God, okay? Honoring God is key. In essence, we could say Daniel and his companions, Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego, are in fact superior, okay? Superior to these magicians, to these astrologers. Matter of fact, just a note here, you may have something similar to it, but let me find it. Just bear with me just for a moment. I found this via, okay? By the way, speaking of wisdom in that day and time, okay? Speaking of wisdom, "The wisdom of the Chaldeans," okay? That being the Babylonians, another name for the Babylonians, consisted of sciences current at the time, okay? Including the interpretation of omens communicated through astrology, the examination of livers and kidneys, and other animal entrails, and the examination of the organs and flight patterns of birds. So the Word of God is saying Daniel and his companions are ten times better than that. They are superior to that because they are seeking God. They are setting themselves apart from that kind of science for the wisdom of God.
On faith strength, we are on the stuff, on the...
Oh, in the book? Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. So we'll get to that. So thank you for giving me that moment just to highlight a few things. I hope that is helpful to you. So let's do this as, that's a great segue, Elka, into the book. Let's look at page 11, please, okay? Page 11. There were a couple of things that if you had had an opportunity to read it or if you were coming to it for the very first time this morning, a couple of things that I think will be noteworthy to highlight and star. So moving to page 13, that's why I really began to star and highlight and to make a few notes here. So if you would, I'm not gonna read everything verbatim, but I do want to highlight just a few things. So let's start at the top of the page here, okay? Just to give us a good understanding of the context, the background here. So it says, "God's prophetic warnings to Judah went unheeded until finally, a little over a century after the fall of Israel, God's sword of judgment fell hard." The book of Daniel tells us how it happened, okay? Start highlighting here, because this is key, okay? Second paragraph here. "Jerusalem fell to Nebuchadnezzar in 605 B.C.," and we've got biblical references there that we can turn to. "And the king then deported his Jewish hostages to Babylon in three stages." Now this is important, okay? This is why we need a supplement for deeper, deeper understanding here, okay? "The first group, which was taken immediately, included only the elite nobility. Two subsequent deportations occurred in 597 and 587, leaving Jerusalem..." That's a key date, by the way, 587 B.C. "...leaving Jerusalem in ruins, and only a few of the poor, aged, and infirm in the land." Okay? And here he is. Here's Dr. Jeremiah talking about the sovereignty of God, that third paragraph now. Daniel 1 and 2 introduces us to the entire theme of the book, the sovereignty of God, okay? So let's take note of that. Okay, just a little bit more here that I wanted to mention on page 13. Drop down to a little below halfway on this page where it picks up with the paragraph for the next 70 years, and I want to start there. Bless you. "For the next 70 years, the people of Judah would live in Babylon in a constant..." in a constant state of upheaval, under the successive control of the Babylonian, Medio-Persian, and Persian empires." Down below it, "The seventy-year duration of the Babylonian captivity was not a random number." Okay, you can begin highlighting here. I think this is really rich here. "It had a significant meaning, okay? The seventy-year duration." The Book of Second Chronicles explains that the exile, in quotes, fulfilled the word of the Lord until the land had enjoyed her Sabbaths. "As long as she lay desolate, she kept Sabbath to fulfill seventy years." And there are those biblical references there. Okay, here's where he begins to unpack it, okay? "To understand what it means for the land to enjoy her Sabbaths, we must go back several centuries to the time when Israel first entered the Promised Land. At that time, God instructed the people to observe the Sabbath of the land, Sabbath meaning rest, as a matter of good agricultural conservation. They were to allow their fields to lie fallow every seventieth year." Sabbath, excuse me, seventh, seventh year, okay? "That year, they weren't to plough. They weren't to plant. Israel had failed to observe this one-and-seven Sabbath for four hundred and ninety years. In this stretch of time, Israel should have observed seventy Sabbath years. So the exile of seventy years during which the Promised Land lay fallow would make up for the deficit. If Israel would not give God the Sabbath he required, then he would take it from them by means of captivity." So I thought that was helpful, okay? Very, very helpful to the understanding. And look, quite frankly, I'm having to read and reread that to make sense of it. I don't know that I fully have understood that, but I'm rereading it and reading it again. But I found that helpful. So there was, on page 14, I'll just make note of, just please take note of how many times idolatry and rebellion are mentioned here, okay? Among Judah, among the king, among the Israelite people, multiple, multiple times, okay? 14, 15, page 15. What I want to go to next and spend some time in is page 16 and page 17, okay? And this talks about the curriculum for the schooling of these young men that were picked. And I want to go back to the word here to kind of set up this section. Let's look at verse four here in chapter one, okay? Verse four, okay? "So the king orders the master of eunuchs to bring some of the children of Israel, and some of the king's descendants, and some of the nobles." And then he gives specifics here to who the king is looking for. "Young men in whom there was no blemish, but good-looking, gifted in all wisdom, possessing knowledge and quick to understand, who had ability to serve in the king's palace, and whom they might teach the language and literature of the Chaldeans. And the king appointed them a daily provision of the king's delicacies and of the wine which he drank, and three years of training, so that at the end of that time they might serve before the king." All right. Let's go into some detail about what is being talked about there. So if you would, on page 16, just as an example, okay? I thought this was very, very helpful here. So a three-year application process, the pastor says. "That's what Daniel and his friends endured when they were being groomed to serve in important roles in the Babylonian government. The elite of Judah's young men were examined in three specific areas to see if they were qualified to serve." So just take note, if you would, what these tests were, okay? The physical test, the intellectual test, and the social test, okay? And then on page 17, a curriculum, okay? A curriculum here. So this raised my eyebrows here, okay? A curriculum, okay? Let's look at that in some detail. Halfway down page 17, okay? "So this training course, this three-year training course for these gifted young men included immersion." Okay, let's come back to that in just a moment. But highlight that. "Included immersion in the extremely difficult Chaldean language, and an introduction to Babylonians' literature and learning, including astronomy, astrology, architecture, and religion." Okay, highlight that. And then there was a note. Ah, here it is, okay? Let's move over to page 18, okay? Now, take note, please, of this bolded title. "The Campaign for Their Seduction." There is an agenda here, okay? There is motivation behind what they are doing. Take note, please, of that main title, okay? We have the scripture that introduces it, but wow, what really, really struck me was this next paragraph here where it says right under the scripture, "The indoctrination of these young men into Babylonian culture was by design." Underline that. Very key, very important. "Nebuchadnezzar didn't want to simply educate them. He wanted to disengage them from their previous cultural conditioning and transform them into full-fledged Babylonians." Wow, okay? And I'm thinking about the state of our world, just for a moment, okay? I was listening. If you listen to the FM radio, 94.9, Wilkins Radio, just a great biblically-based radio station there. There was talk from a missionary about how in other parts of the world, children are being indoctrinated in such a way to hate God, okay? To turn away from the word of God and anything that is of the gospel of Jesus Christ. And how difficult he was lamenting about getting the gospel of Jesus Christ in another country. But I would make the case too that missionaries, okay? Don't necessarily have to go to some faraway land and offer the gospel. Missionaries are coming to America now, okay? And facing the same kind of hostility and agitation, okay? And they too, you know, are frustrated. So I wanted to mention that, but two, I don't know why this word came to me, but it's a word that I first heard of all things in the movie genre of westerns, okay? And it's the revisionist western. Now, let me explain, okay? Sometime in the 60s, 70s, and 80s, okay? There was a shift between, from, the hero of the western, the cowboy in the big white hat, the John one, okay? And the bad guy was always in the black hat. He was the bad guy. He was evil, okay? And there was a clear distinction, okay? Between good and bad, good and evil. But a shift happened, okay? And this shift, and these movies started to come out where there was this graying, okay? Graying of what is good, graying of what is bad, graying of what is evil, okay? Some of my favorite westerns are revisionist westerns, okay? So I just grew up enjoying them because they were on TV. High Plains Drifter being one of them, okay? A lot of Clint Eastwood westerns. But the idea was, the idea was this, okay? That no longer was there a clear distinction, okay? Between good and evil. That the hero was, in a sense, a fallen hero. He was good and he was evil, okay? He was mysterious, okay? So you really, it began to gray things tremendously, okay? The revisionist western. It was a redoing, a rewriting of what was the traditional good guy, bad guy. I say all of that to say, in this very day, in this very age that we're living in, no longer, okay? Is this idea of the revisionist western just about movies, okay? It's about rewriting history, okay? It's about rewriting, okay? The narrative that we all grew up with, that speaks to all of us, that spoke to our parents who helped to write it themselves. A rewrite, which can be very dangerous. And the word that stuck out to me was indoctrination, okay? What the next generation is being indoctrinated with is concerning. You know, it's very, very, very concerning. So it's not necessarily something that is new, okay? That was created in the last 20 or 30 years, but it was happening biblically, okay? So many, so many years ago. But an indoctrination. And the thing that really struck me about this on page 18, okay? Was to disengage, okay? The pastor says, "Disengage them from their previous cultural conditioning and transform." Wow. "Transform them into something else, into a full-fledged Babylonian in this case." Okay, so how, okay? How do you do something like that, okay? If there's a motivation, if there's a bent to doing this, how do you do that, okay? Well, let's look at it, okay? Page 18, okay? "He emasculated them, okay? He emasculated them. He tore into flesh, mutilated the body." That is one way, okay? That is one way. Another way here that's mentioned is that he obligated them, okay? He obligated them. Let's look at that just for a moment. Of course, we don't need to go into great detail about castration, but I do want to look at a little further about obligating them. Okay, watch this, bottom of page 18. "Nebuchadnezzar appointed them," or excuse me, "appointed for them a daily provision of the king's delicacies and of the wine which he drank." He wanted, okay, here's the bent here. He wanted to get them accustomed to the good thing, excuse me, of the palace so they would never be satisfied to leave the king's service. There he is, fully dependent, completely dependent on a human king, not on God Almighty, the king. And what does Scripture say? What does Scripture say about kings? Kings rise, kings fall under the mightiness of the Lord God Almighty. So what does Daniel have to do? He's got to set himself apart. He's got to honor God, and that has got to be his heart. That has got to be his motivation. Because there is this very evil oppressive force. And let's call Nebuchadnezzar what he is, okay? A evil, I even read somewhere, maybe it was in a note, but an evil demonic force trying to assimilate him and rid him of his dependence upon God Almighty. And this is how he was doing it. Tearing him to flesh, obligating him, and also assimilating him as well. That's page 19, okay? Page 19. Mind controlled, did you say that, Brenda? Yes ma'am, yes ma'am. Well said there. So page 19, middle of the way down, we see that name change. And that's another way that you can change the identity of someone is through a name. Remove what was to what is. Let me move to page 20, please, if you will join me on page 20.
Mind control was in Germany. I give that. My whole name, I was getting a different name as Elka. My parents had a hard time to give the name Zilia. It's not a poor German name. They couldn't give me that name. It had to be a poor German name, and the poor German name is Elka. He ordered him to gain this name, Elka, to me. Whole family was upset over this. My grandfather later said, "We're weak children." That's why I named my daughter the name that my father wanted for me, Zilia.
Wow, there you go. You've got a living testimony there. Thank you, thank you, welcome, for sharing that. Let's look at, just for a moment, top of page 20. I want to start to highlight this section, okay? Because this is a key here, these two paragraphs. "Nebuchadnezzar wanted Daniel and his three friends to forget Jerusalem." Circle that word, forget, okay? Again, there is a very evil motivation here, okay? "To forget Jerusalem, their God, the temple, and everything related to their Jewish heritage and culture." Wow. It was happening right here before them, okay? But Daniel and his friends didn't forget, amen, okay? Circle that because that is key. That is key, the sovereignty of God here. Almost 70 years later, we see Daniel in Babylon still praying daily as he bows in the direction of Jerusalem. Nebuchadnezzar could change their names, and I circled this part, but he couldn't change their nature. Wow, okay? We're living in those times right now, okay? Nebuchadnezzar's got a different name, okay? But living in those times right now, okay? How important prayer is. How important it is to remember and to stay solid in your beliefs, okay? Though much of Daniel's daily life was a simulation... Though much of Daniel's daily life was assimilated into Babylonian culture, his heart remained centered in Jerusalem. Our hearts, church, have to remain centered in the word of God and in Jesus in these times. So wow, just very fitting, so very relevant. Folks, just a couple of other things, I've been given the high sign that our time is winding down, but let me just, let me mention just a couple of other things. Let's turn to page twenty-four. Turn to page twenty-four, middle of the way on page twenty-four, it says this. "It's likely that Daniel influenced as many as thirteen kings and four kingdoms in his lifetime. As we will see in the following chapters, Daniel's influence on these kings was enormous, wicked, though most of the kings were. Daniel's counsel, his courage, and his absolute integrity often turned them away from idolatry and led them to recognize the power of the true God." And we will begin to see that in chapter two for next week, okay. So, look, if you have had a Daniel in your life, thanks be to God, okay. You can be a Daniel for someone, for your grandchild, for your child, for your spouse, for that person who is near and dear to your heart, who just feels lost. You need that solid spiritual biblical anchor there, a Daniel. Let me just, okay. Let's do this, let's turn to page twenty-six, twenty-six. The pastor does a great job about saying, okay, here's my rendition of the word of God, okay. Here's the background, but let's apply Daniel for today, okay. So on page twenty-six and twenty-seven, he does just that, okay. And I'll just mention a few things here. He says, "Whether you're a child, a teen, an adult, your legacy can influence the world until Christ comes." Please underline that, okay, so important, so important. Your legacy can truly make a difference, okay. But in the meantime, here are some things that we need to remember. Number one, it takes conviction, underline that, please, okay. "Daniel made up his mind that he wouldn't be defiled. Though he was exiled from Judah, his heart was still under the control," wow, "of the lion of the tribe of Judah. Don't delude your influence by compromising in a fallen society." Wow, so relevant, wow, lots of compromise out there. "Only those who plant flags in the ground of the cross will exert influence for Christ," amen, okay. Number two, it takes the right companions, yes indeed. Thanks be to God that the Lord brought Daniel help, he brought him friends. And we're going to see some trials that they go through, okay, because they stood up for the Lord God Almighty, but it takes companions. Please, don't believe the lies, do not believe the deceit that you are on an island all on your own. We all need to be praying for others, others need to be praying for us, we need to be encouraging others, others need to be encouraging us. The church is a body, the church is a family, okay. We need to be unified under the power and the authority of Jesus Christ together. It takes right companions. And then lastly, bottom of page twenty-six, "It takes calmness and courage," yes. "Notice that Daniel never panicked or overreacted in the face of opposition. Amid life-threatening situations, he remained poised and peaceful." Wow, okay. People appreciate that, people appreciate preachers who are calm, who are peaceful, who are level-headed, okay, who can hear you out, okay. People appreciate believers, okay, with the same gift and the same virtues, okay. Children, grandchildren appreciate calmness and courage in the face. Our Luke, let me tell you, he's, he's a lot, let me put it like that, wow, wow, wow. I was picking up Noah last night from soccer practice, and I get this text from Emily saying, "Luke's trying to kill us," and I'm thinking, "Oh, no, wait, no." "He put a plastic measuring cup on the stove and turned up the stove horn. Pray for us, please, pray for us."
How old is him?
Good boy, Luke. Emily said, I'm gonna tell my wife, she says to me, she says, "If we would have had Luke first, that would have been our only child." We love it, we love it.
How old is Luke?
Luke is four, Luke is four, so God bless him, wow, we love it.
We will pray for you.
Please do, please do, we need it, we need it. But everything is well, the parsonage is fine, I'm fine.
Wait, I think we need to pray for Luke.
I miss my big mouth, I have another study book for this subject here. It's called Make Outdoors, that's my Bible. Here it says, "Before a quick overview from chapter one, what you learn about it. The personal breakthrough of Daniel," and Daniel, I'm sorry, Daniel is in chapter one to twenty-one. B, the construction of useful training in chapter one, three to seven. C, perbed performing duty of plan in eight to sixteen. B, choice of forming forward positions in chapter one, seventeen to twenty-five.
That's the John McHale Bible, right, or commentary?
I like to make out.
Yeah, oh yes, yes ma'am, great preacher, great writer. Well, folks, thank you for your time. I don't in any way want to dominate the class, so please, by all means, if you have a question, if something is just burning that you want to offer, please do, please do. I want to hear from you as well. So I'll zip it a little more from now on, but there was just a lot on my heart there that I wanted to share, but I am so glad that you are here. Thank you for your presence. I want to pray for us, read chapter two, both in the word of God, in Daniel, and also in Dr. Jeremiah's book, I'm gonna pick up, thank you, Lord, okay. All right, let me pray for us, please. Heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus, Lord, I love this church so very much, Lord. I love, Lord, the body's commitment, Lord, to you, to Bible study, Lord, to leading a life, Lord, that Jesus Christ shines from the heart, Lord. We need your word, that manna from above, Lord. Guide us and direct us, keep us safe and secure as we return, Lord, Sunday and again next Wednesday. Bless, Lord, those who need our prayer, Lord, we are praying diligently for them in all things. We ask this in Jesus' holy name, amen. Thank you, folks, appreciate it.